It early it takes forever to spool.
Called order the October seventh, twenty twenty five Planning Commission meeting. Um, seeking approval of agenda.
Motion second.
Motion second.
Who is the second?
I'll take it.
Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, hearing none. Um, approval of minutes from September second Planning Commission meeting.
Motion second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none. New business zoning ordinance update discussion regarding the remaining general regulation section and zoning districts and map section.
Okay, I'll uh go through this here tonight. Um, basically, we have a couple of sections from the previous general regulations section that I want to touch on. One being the tree preservation discussion we had, I got some language in there. Another one being the sign section, which there isn't a lot of changes to it, that's basically existing language, I just took it. There's actually broken out into about ten different sections in the current zoning ordinance, so I kind of codified it into the new update, and there's a few little tweaks here and there. And we also talked about the outside storage, which is more in relation to the storage containers, and then we're going to talk about the residential zoning districts tonight, and then next month we'll come back. And deal with all the other zoning districts like the business, the industrial, commercial, industrial, public institutional. And then at that point, we have gone through the entire ordinance, we'll come back the following month. With an overall update and I'll have updates on all sorts of different items that I've got a list of right now. That we kind of talked about as we went through this, I know the river rock thing came up before the meeting, but we'll have full updates on all those little. Points and that'll be the final time that we'll have to have discussion from you or suggestions or ideas. Um, and what you want to do in regards to um the ordinance. And then after if everything's good at that point, we come back potentially schedule a public hearing. At the planning commission where everyone be invited to come discuss it and start going through that official approval process. So, alright. Um, so we'll start with the tree preservation here tonight, um, I've got on page three of our report. Uh, discussion on um, a bunch of definitions. Uh, so all these definitions are being added into the definition section in the zoning ordinance. So to kind of listed there, I didn't want to put the whole definition section in, so I just pulled them all out. So basically, we got definitions for canopy, coniferous tree deciduous tree diameter. Uh, drip line, forest or hardwood, you know, all the different types of definitions that are in relation to the tree stuff. And then we'll go back to the tree preservation section, uh, which was in the landscaping section. Uh, that we talked about previously, but this was kind of left blank, we had a discussion about adding some language in. To actually include a tree plan with new developments where they'd have to go and inventory a type of trees, so we have. You know what a significant tree is, which is one of the key definitions, and that is basically a healthy deciduous hardwood tree measuring six inches caliper and diameter. Healthy, healthy softwood deciduous tree measuring twelve inches in uh diameter. Or a healthy coniferous tree, which is like an evergreen twelve feet in height, so. If they have a tree that meets those criteria on site, they would be required to inventory that tree. So when they do submit their, you know, development plans, any trees on that site would be listed. And then there would be a calculation of how many are being impacted and removed and how many are being saved. If they meet a certain criteria, there's potentially that there'd be some replacement uh that would be required with that. Um, so we'll get into that here shortly, but basically the tree preservation section. Uh, is to basically, you know, kind of look at, you know, wooded areas within the cities, and there's a lot of areas that do not have much for trees, it's just open farmland. You know, this potentially doesn't apply to that, but there are areas where it would apply if somebody was coming in with a development, so. Um, basically, they have the kind of the purpose and state uh findings of that, that's under the uh number one, app, number two is the application. And how that would be done, and then three is the process, so basically for developers. Uh, you go forward, you get the tree preservation plan, there are um licensed uh landscape architects or people out there that do these for a living. Um, there's, you know, different people you can hire, so they would, you know, hire somebody to come and do all the work that would meet this criteria. Um, kind of goes through that, uh, for homeowner business owners, uh, talks about. Uh, this is for an existing house, let's say somebody wants to put up a detached garage or tear their house down and rebuild. Or just has an infill lot somewhere that's fully wooded and they want to do something, so. With that one, they identify the significant trees on the property, you know, which ones will be removed due to grading or construction of the pro uh house or whatever on the property. Um, and then it's, you need to comply with the tree um replacements procedure, just like any developer would. Uh, it shall be submitted with the grading permit or the building permit, uh, where it's a developer, you probably submit that with the plemmery plat. Um, which would be a little bit different process. Uh, the tree preservation plan itself. Um, developers shall be responsible for implementing it during site grading and during plan development, so they would have to protect. Uh, the trees being saved with, you know, silk fence or tree protection fence or something of that nature. Um, basically, it's the, you know, to be used for the overall best design of the project. Um, so when you're designing that, if there's a one really nice stand of huge oak trees or something, maybe you want to save that within your design that can be looked at during that process. Um, it's courage to meet with staff to discuss that, also there's mandatory protection. So that's where that fencing comes in to apply. Uh, significant tree removal for developments, um, you know, they shall retain as many as possible. Uh, forty percent of the existing caliper inches of the trees may be removed during development without replacement, so if that, let's just say. They have a bunch of trees on site, they figured out the caliper inches that would be, you know, all the diameter, so they figure that out. They can remove up to forty percent of the total caliper inches of trees on the site with no replacement requirements, there still would be. A requirement with every lot to put in your, you know, required trees for your front yard, side yard and corner lot. Things of that nature, but there's no additional requirements if they remove forty percent, because you're going to have ponds, you're going to have roads. You don't have to take out some trees, now if you go to, let's say they remove sixty percent. So twenty percent of that um uh caliper inches that are being removed. Has to be replaced based on the schedule, and I'll kind of get in that here shortly. Um, for our tree and uh home and business owners, we're just saying we move that down to thirty percent. Um, so it's, it's not, you know, a little bit more strict, but in some cases you might have six trees on the lot. That are being, you know, removed, and only one's being saved, so we can look at that a little bit later now. If you guys have a different requirement on the forty percent for developers, thirty percent for homeowner, we can do that now. You know, and there is no right or wrong, every city's a little different. Typically, you see anywhere from like a thirty to fifty percent range, so I kind of went in the middle with forty. And you typically see a little bit higher requirement for the homeowner. If the city feels that's not fair, we can go the other way, so it's up to you if you have any comments on that, I guess, so. Do you want to have anything to say or no?
Uh, yeah, I would say just keep it the way it is, but then, you know, per. Per property, you know, make the best decision on what's going on.
Case by case basis.
Yeah, you know. And they will, but if, you know, by the numbers, if they do remove that percent, they are required to replace.
Yep.
So, yeah, like I said, if they can save a real nice standard trees, that can be part of that discussion. Uh, you got a little more uh leeway with a plan unit development where you can actually require that. On a straight zoning requirement, you can't really specifically require it, because if they meet the standards of this, you know, the R one district or the R two district. You know, they, they have an inherent right to move forward, but they do have to follow the tree stuff, so they have to replace them if need be, so.
Is there a warranty on that?
Um.
For developer, a year warranty or something?
Yeah, so there will be a warranty, I think, uh, and I can't remember if it was in this section or the other section, but there is a warranty on that, so they have to be, you know, alive for a certain period of time. Um, I think that was in the other, not in this specific section, but in the tree planting, you know, that we talked about previously, that warranty was in there, I'll double check what that.
Is that the financial guarantee number six right there?
Well, that's based, oh yeah, there it is, it is in there, one full year from the date of replacement, and then there's a hundred, so in the letter of credit when they do a development. You know, they give a letter of credit for, you know, sewer water streets, whatever, there's also be one for the replacement trees that are required, so. So we can guarantee those trees get planted, and a lot of times trees get planted at a different time period than say the construction of the. Public infrastructure, because sometimes they put them in after the project kind of half done, sometimes they do them right up front. And the tree warranty can start at a different date, let's say than the, the street warranty can, so a lot of times. You put the street in, you wait for the following summer to put the wear course on, that's when your warranty starts, where if you put all the trees in the first year, then that warranty starts right at that time, so.
How about Lewis, he's in the middle of it, he did one hundred percent uh, black every single tree, what are you gonna do about him right now?
There's nothing we can do, because this was prior to the uh.
It's in process, so.
No, that he's already, this is not even an adopted ordinance yet. So we can't enforce something that's not adopted. So, yeah, we're actually going through to look to adopt. One, he's still grandfathered in because he was in prior to the ordinance. So it'd be like anybody that would be grandfathered in on conformity, they'd, they'd be ahead of the ordinance, so. Um, so anyways, uh, moving down, um, tree exempt from replacement, uh. So if they have dead disease or dying trees invasive species, trees that are transplanted from another site, there are some that would be exempt, so if they have a bunch of dying trees like ashes or something like that. We're not required, talked about, that's the hundred and twenty-five percent of the, on the letter of credit. Um, or, you know, one year on the warranty as well. Uh, tree replacement, there's the formula for replacement. Uh, for developments which exceed the percentage of allowable removal of significant trees. All trees shall be replaced at a ratio of one half caliper inch to one uh, one inch caliper inch removed, so. They're taking out a hundred inches, they would have to replace fifty caliper inches, typically you plant. From a deciduous tree like two and a half uh inch caliper tree. So you just would figure that out, you know, how many two and a half inch trees you need to get to fifty inches, that would be the number of trees they would have to replace. Now, there's also uh the types of trees when it comes to coniferous. Um, you know, a coniferous tree six feet high kind of counts as the same, so they can mix in. You know, if it's rear yards, a buddy in a roadway, like a busier road, like county road or something. They may want to put a bunch of pine trees in the rear yard to kind of buffer the roadway. So they could put pines in or evergreens in versus say a deciduous tree, so. That's part of the plan that gets approved ultimately by the city, and the city does have the ability to request, you know, we want to have, see more screen over here. Or maybe we want to screen that neighboring property that's been there for a hundred years versus just leaving them wide open to the new development, so. So that's kind of how the tree replacement works, and then it's got a list of acceptable tree species. Uh, this is kind of number C at the bottom of uh page four, and then we have the list on the top of page five, um, those would be trees that would be allowed. Uh, then there's also a fee in lieu of tree placement, um, um, where you can pay cash. So let's say, you know, like when we did the uh, um, old fire hall and we kind of converted that commercially a few years ago. Uh, there was, if I remember right, there was a requirement for, I think it was like six trees or eight trees, but it was a small lot with not a lot of room. So in that case, we would now have the ability to say we'll take cash as a city, which would go towards say planting trees, say in a park. Or if there's a public area that's, you know, doing it, you know, like say we got the new um splash pad and you wanted to add a couple of trees around that. The developer could put those trees in versus the city paying for that versus having them on their own property now. In most cases, developers, trees. Are a plus, you know, they want trees because people like them and helps the value of their lots, they're going to try to find a way to. Put those trees on their, their property in most cases and find a way to screen that, that'll use up what they have to, in some cases they'll put in more. If they want certain screening of roadways and stuff like that, so. So that's kind of the tree preservation ordinance, um, kind of gives us something that we haven't had in the past. Uh, so we'll kind of move on from that one, the next section is the outdoor store, and then if you see we have. Our existing stuff, this was already taken out of the ordinance, we kind of talked about this last time as well. But um, all this would go away and it's been kind of redrafted, I only put in the, I didn't put the full section, I just. For this meeting, so we did talk about it at the last meeting. Uh, the next section is the outside storage, and some of this we've kind of briefly touched on, but we're going to talk about the um. Uh, you know, basically the stuff at the end there, it's under number eight, and this is the storage containers. Um, so we, I kind of added something in there about column land sea containers, and that definition was added into the uh. Uh, definition section, which we talked about way back at the beginning when we went through the definitions. Um, basically, under number eight. Yes.
Quick question, John, under, under number five for off-street parking facilities.
Yes.
It mentions auto repair shops, last time at any point did you talk about? RV Bob's repair and.
Yep.
They have out there and how that might affect it.
Um, okay, so basically number five says off-street park, parking facilities, which is what we're talking about, otherwise here in regular uh and except in residential districts where any. Off-street parking area containing over six spaces may be required to be screened. Auto repair shops shall at no time have in excess of six disabled vehicles on the premises that are not screened from view. Um, that's existing language, so do we want to adjust that upward or what are we thinking, I guess?
Well, we definitely have to go upwards.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There they are, as of the twenty twenty-four aerial photo, I don't know how many are disabled or not. I just know this has been something that has been longstanding within the community and. I don't want inadvertent cons, inadvertent consequences.
So in this case, just so everyone knows, this is current zoning ordinance, so we're not changing what's existing.
Right.
So if we want to change it, we're actually amending it to potentially address.
Can we just exempt like auto repair, like put in there exemption?
Well, how do you exempt, what, what if? All of a sudden, the next auto repair comes in and puts in a hundred junk cars and just sits out in their lot.
True.
You know, so it's, that's, that's what we're trying to watch out for and, you know, I don't know, like I said, if all those cars are not disabled.
Uh, that's where I'm trying to go, it's like. We write these things for the protection of the future as well. Making sure we don't accidentally clip somebody that's existing and how do you thread that needle?
Yeah.
And how do you, how are you ever going to know what's disabled and what's not?
Well, disabled to mean it's doesn't have, you know, you know, doesn't run or operate or, you know, no.
I know, but how is, how is?
Anybody.
Is Joe probably gonna know?
Which is which?
You know? And even as administration, how are you gonna know, I mean, yeah, you can tell if it hasn't moved in, you know, nine months, probably odds are it is, but.
That, I think that would be something we would have to receive a complaint about. Hey, John's auto repair shop. They've had those vehicles, they've had those twenty vehicles out there, same position.
Well, I mean, like. But like RV, they do towing and, you know, probably half the toes never come back to pick up their vehicle. You know, it's shot or been in an accident, and the thing is they've got a process to go through to be able to get rid of that vehicle. And it probably takes anywhere from thirty to ninety days to complete that process.
If they're lucky.
If they're lucky.
I guess here's the thing, I mean, right now with this language, somebody complained and we'd have to address it today.
Right.
And we're, because we're not making changes to it, so.
Right.
Um, I guess, I don't know, it's. Yeah, we've got these existing situations here, but it's also in the future, twenty years down the road, some other business might come in and it might be a different story, so. And it also says that they're not screened from view, so if they were screened, they could potentially have more than six. That's the other issue.
When they're impound lot, is that screened or is that just fence?
Just fence.
It's just fence.
But that would be nothing to throw up, probably.
Slats or whatever.
Slats or tarps or whatever. But, you know, that only holds so much too, because they've got so much tow equipment that goes in there every night, and. I think there's three rollbacks, tow truck. You know, and then a few, you know, toes that go in there, but.
So basically, what we're saying is any parking lot. Um, off-street parking area should be screened with six spaces or more. So this is kind of addressing any parking lot, you know, depending on what it is.
Count the school too, right?
Well, this is adjacent, um, uh. In residential districts where any off-street parking contain over six spaces may be required to be screened, so the residential or the school is in the um. Public institutional district, so. And then it talks about auto repair shop shall at no time have more than six disabled vehicles not screened from view. So the question is, do we want to, are we opening up a can of worms by trying to adjust this?
I don't know, I mean, if it hasn't been enforced yet, I'd say that disabled would be, it would have to be on blocks. If it's got wheels and, you know, it doesn't look like the engine's missing, if it's not visibly disabled, I don't think the standard is to go test it.
Or should we just say if it's licensed?
Actively scheduled to be repaired.
A lot of those might not have tabs, I mean.
Well, like I said, they might be repairing all those vehicles there over time.
Yeah.
Meaning they're disabled, but they're, you know, some might run, but it might be something that, you know, be fixed, I mean. I don't know, it's, you know, ultimately, if you want to fix the problem, require a fence. That would be the, you know, that's screening it, and that would be the ultimate thing, but do we want, you know? I mean, what we could do is take the requirement out, but now we're changing what's existing right now.
Yeah, and then you take it out and what's to say, the next person doesn't come in and open an auto shop and then have a junkyard and.
Or somebody sells out one of these businesses and changes, or they just start doing different, you know, business where they're taking more junk cars and it becomes a junkyard.
I mean, I'm comfortable leaving the way, the way it is, and then can we just say that there's grandfathered situations?
Well, no, because this is existing language, so they're.
They're already in violation.
They're already in violation potentially.
Potentially in violation.
Yeah.
My opinion is still leave it as is and just. Like you say, we're not changing anything, so.
I just feel bad if somebody complains, then we.
Then you gotta step in.
More or less have to step in and say, hey, you guys got a fence in your whole dang parking lot.
Do we have a definition of what a disabled vehicle is?
Um.
Is it, like Michael said, is it on blocks or is it?
Expired tabs.
Expired tabs.
I don't know if we're being in the zoning ordinance, but I'll shut quick. Not currently registered.
Right, yeah.
Because I mean, if it, if there was a definition that you could just fall back on and. It might solve the problem, it might, it might solve that issue.
Yeah, I mean, it, we could put a definition there, but I think it's gonna. We're gonna just specify specifically what a disabled vehicle, I think everyone kind of knows what one is already, so.
I hope so.
Yeah. Trying to think here.
Can we maybe put like, uh, an exemption for abandoned toes, you know, or?
Impounds or?
Like, yeah, abandoned impounds. Because there is a process for that.
For toes instead of six months, give nine?
Nine, a year, whatever, I mean, I. It, it's all a process because they can fight in between, then you gotta start over and then. Some have leans, and then you get a fight with that.
I don't know, you start talking about doing all that, I think.
I know.
Creating a problem that's not a problem.
Well, right, until.
Fixing something that's not an issue, I guess.
Right.
I don't know, it's existing language, it hasn't been an issue so far, but. If we weren't even updating this, somebody could make a complaint to tomorrow and you'd have to say you'd have to address it, whether we're doing the zoning ordinance or not.
I just don't want to see him get slapped with having to put up an expensive fence all of a sudden. When they've been doing it for fifty years.
I think, I think leaving this section five or item five alone is fine, but I do like the idea of adding or amending whatever definition exists and loosening that to.
Yeah.
To specify exactly what we don't want, which is vehicles with holes in them or on blocks or no wheel, I mean, that. Specify what a disabled vehicle is, is being something unsightly. I mean, to the, to the extent that their yard looks like a parking lot, right, who cares?
We're saying they can get up to six right now like that.
Right.
So.
But.
So actually, we're probably okay, because none of them, I don't think, meet that criteria at this point.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean, there, there might be six out there, but who knows?
Right.
You know, and how do you prove it, you know, you have to go and start every car up and drive it to check it or?
I think we could have a pretty, we, we could dawdle with that process if the complaint ever came out.
And remember, this, this section's ultimately, ultimately about outdoor storage, and a lot of that has to do with screening from. You know, the public's view or residential homes or whatever, so. This being a auto or a auto repair shop, like I said, we don't want to have a lot of this out there. Because this is technically kind of like a highway business type district. You know, this is like a McDonald's that came to town, it'd be, could be right next to one of these businesses. You know, or some sort of, you know, retail place like that, a restaurant, so. Okay, well, I'll check the definition, it's not in the zoning ordinance, so we don't have one to pose, I don't know if the city code has one in a different section or not, but. I'll have to verify that and see what we can come up with and kind of go from there.
Okay.
All right, anyways, back to number eight, um. Well, I'll just go to number seven too, I guess, so uh, within the I one district, now remember, we're talking about adding an I one industrial district. Which would be, you know, potentially like Nethinkmire property or something of that nature, so. Semi-tracked trailers used for normal freight and cartage and transit for up to one hundred and twenty consecutive days per calendar year. Um, so we are going to allow that in the industrial district, which is pretty typical to have those semi-trailers sitting out in industrial type building, you know, in the back where they bring deliveries with loading docks. Stuff like that, so um, that was added, and then under eight. We're talking in the agricultural district, the CI commercial industrial district and the I one industrial district, and this is what the, the three districts we're talking about allowing. Um, land sea containers, now, this has been discussed previously on this is. The, the zoning right there that we just talked about is uh CI or C one, it's commercial. Um, that's, I don't have it in there, so I, do we want to add that into that district, because like I said, that's kind of your highway business district, and one of the proposals. That I'm going to recommend is renaming that to the highway business district, because that's truly what that district is, we'll talk about that at the next month's meeting, but. My question is, do we want to include that district in there to allow this as well, when you could potentially have. You know, new retail or commercial type businesses coming in. Uh, um, this type of storage is typically done in more of an industrial type setting, but auto repair is kind of that. I don't know, they're typically a conditional use permit in this district, or they're kind of more of that. Could go into industrial, but can also be in, in a commercial area, and I think that's why we have the screening requirement because of. The potential zoning that could be, you know, for that type of use, so. I don't know, do you have any thoughts if we want it in that C one district?
So on our zoning map here, the, these pink sections are the C one.
Yep. And long term, you know, if we had development up by highway seven and twenty-five out there, like commercial development, it would be C one. As well, that most likely would be the zoning district that that would go.
I would say we would want it in those districts.
You want the storage containers?
Would not allow.
Would not allow them, okay, so I don't have it listed, so, um, I just want to make sure, um, because if you read the next one. It says land sea containers shall not be allowed in any residential district, the C one or the C two district or the public institutional. Um, and I want to talk about the public institutional because that potentially deals with um, the public storage. No, is that public institution or is that? CI, can't remember now.
Uh, CI.
Yeah, that's uh, public works is down here at CI.
Okay, yeah, so then we're out there, okay, all right, so we left that alone. So, so yeah, so I, well, for now, we'll keep it out of the C one, I guess, so anything that's existing up there would be potentially grandfathered in on that one property, I know it had some for sure, so.
Yeah, one eighty-five, I think.
Yeah, yeah, you can see them on the, yeah, three of them there or something.
Yep. Two.
So then, okay, then, then, once we determine which districts this will be allowed in, um. You know, the applicants can submit their application, shall be submitted to the city for review under zoning compliance, and we've got a whole list of requirements, and a lot of this we've talked about before. And a lot of this language is actually kind of drafted previously, and then we kind of put it on hold till we came to this point. Um, but I'll just kind of go through them real quick, so I know there's some discussion, um, the first one is accessory use. This shall not be, you know, shall be an accessory use as an outs, outside storage. Um, any other outdoor storage of land sea containers is prohibited, and they shall not be located on a lot prior to construction or principal structure. So we're not going to allow them on a vacant lot where they start packing them in there with no building or no principal business or something of that nature. Uh, number allowed, this shall be more than, or there's not being more than three located on a lot, I know there was a lot of discussion on this previously, if three was a number. Five is a number, eight is a number, um, so I kind of just went with what we previously drafted and figured we'd talk about tonight. Uh, land sea containers shall not be permitted to be rented or leased to third parties in storage for storage purposes and shall only be used by the. Owner or occupant of the lot, so the renter could use one as well. Um, dimensions, forty feet in length, eight and a half feet in width and ten feet in height, and they shall not be stacked on top of each other. Uh, the location, uh, shall be located in the rear yard of the lot or the side yard of the lot. If it's located in the rear fifty percent of the lot, so. In the case where you have a, a structure way back, we want to make sure it's sitting back, and in no case. Shall it be for, uh, further front than the front of the building. So they, they can go up to fifty percent of the rear yard, you know, halfway up the lot, but if the building sits back, they still have to be behind the front of the building. Um, is what that's basically saying. Uh, lot coverage, uh, unless be used on a temporary basis for construction or moving, which sometimes you'll see one of these just on a temporary basis, which is allowed. Um, it shall count towards a lot coverage requirement, you know, so it's no different than potentially a, a structure out there, so you got to look at that. Uh, those districts typically have a higher lot coverage, so it probably not a big issue, but it is, we need to address. No lettering or signs shall be permitted on the container unless it contains. Um, on land sea container as manufactured, um, so if it has like the manufacturer name, that's fine. Screening shall meet the screening requirements of the section, screening of this chapter. Unless the owner paints the land sea container in earth toned color to complement the principal structure on the lot. Screening shall be required when the landsky container abuts a residential district or public right of way. Um, and we talked about that quite a bit previously as well, and then exterior appearance, it just kind of basically says it's still being in a good condition. You know, it has to be no rust or anything of that nature, so basically, this is, yeah, go ahead.
What about hazardous material?
Uh, hazardous materials addressed through, I think, a different section of the city code, I don't remember the number off the top of my head, but um, that would be addressed through that.
Okay.
So, yeah, so that would.
Do we need to address it in here, just because, I don't know?
It's not in the zoning ordinance to address it, but we do have a section of the zoning ordinance, let me see if I can just find it real quick here, that's already addressing it. Um. Under the current ordinance. This would be uh, under performance standards, there's like waste material. And stuff of that nature, and then we had, we kind of updated that language in there, so that is addressed, it has to meet the.
Okay.
I think if I remember, it meets the Minnesota. I think if I remember, it meets the Minnesota state statutes for whatever that section is under state statutes. So it does address that. So we do have regulations and that is a whole separate section other than outside.
And then it addresses the containers then too in that section, saying that if you have a container, not to have hazardous.
Well, I would think if there's hazardous materials, the MPCA regulations are going to cover it.
Yep. But.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find, I could probably, yeah, we did go through this. Let's see here. I gotta find which month it was. I think it was this month. So, yeah, in, under. It would be the month before.
You can get back to us.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have the language in a different section that we previously went over.
Okay.
But, yeah, it wouldn't necessarily be specifically dressed under the also outdoor storage. So. So, yeah, I don't know. That's kind of a lot of the stuff we had previously talked about and we kind of went through all that, you know, and there was a few questions and a few back and forth on some of them, but. I guess that's what's being proposed. So if we want something different, now's the time to make a comment, I guess.
Excuse me, we've been talking about this forever, but I just want to trace it back to this all started with, these already exist. They're out in the community and our current zoning. Without them defined in our current zoning right now, they're already not allowed.
No, they are allowed as outside storage or outdoor storage.
They currently require screen.
They require screening.
Ultimately, what we're doing is setting some conditions to allow for not screening them in very specific conditions.
Correct.
So really, we're just, we're offering an offer.
In the industrial areas, why aren't we screening from another industrial building?
Right.
That's kind of what we're putting together here. And then we're putting specifics on the number, you know, the color, the siding, you know, all that sort of stuff, where they can be on the lot, that sort of deal. Yeah. It was, it was something that was out there, but it wasn't really ever a problem, but.
And now the people with more than three, correct me if I'm wrong.
They are grandfathered in. Yeah.
Going forward, that's all you.
Yeah, I think there was like three or four properties that currently had them.
So get your containers now before November, December.
But the city could enforce the screening on them though if they got them now. That's what everyone's got to remember. So it's, they're not prohibited specifically. They can do them. It just has, you know, requirements.
Eight foot tall fence around my yard and then put a C container in the back.
All right. Is there anything else with that one right now?
No, I think, I think we've touched everything on that.
Okay. And then sign regulations is the next section. This one's fairly lengthy. I'm not proposing a lot of changes. The sign ordinance actually is pretty decent. It has a lot of stuff in there. So anything, everything that doesn't have underlying is existing text. I'm not going to read through it all here tonight. But we, you know, the first findings of purpose section, severability definitions. So we have definitions have all been moved to definitions section. So we're kind of. Really what I'm doing is taking the existing sign language and just kind of putting it to spots where it should be and putting it under one section. There's a couple of pages of definitions, as you can see. Then you get to page 12. Basically, you know, everything's pretty much existing there. Talks about describing the applicant's right to appeal under a certain section. The appeal is actually addressed under the Board of Adjustments and Appeals section. You know, any applicant has that right. So we're kind of duplicating that language, but it's already being addressed in the code. So I'm just making it so it's all, it doesn't conflict with each other. Under fees, I just said the established by ordinance, I've been putting in there determined annually by the city council through the fee schedule. So I want to keep that consistent overall. This is kind of a little simple change. Traffic site visibility triangle is on the bottom of page 13. Basically, we have this addressed in another section. So I wanted to make sure that we're just being consistent with our language there. Basically, instead of saying site visibility triangle, we added traffic. So that's what the true definition is in the rest of the code. Yes.
Real quick, under five, general standards just above that, freestanding temporary sandwich board, portable or building signs that project encroach in the public right of way. Do you want that approved by the city council?
Yeah, I guess that doesn't need to be approved by the city council. That could be adjusted to approve by the city and then staff can handle that at a staff level because that would be like a. You know, like when the downtown area, you got signs that sometimes project out, they have to be certain height and all that stuff. So, yeah, we don't need the city council on there, I guess. It's just a sign permit.
Yeah, I think they just under general sign permit. That one stuck out.
Yeah, I'll just cross out city.
Cross out council there.
Our council, I meant, excuse me, yeah. Respectable. And then next sentence, we got city councils. So I'll do the same thing there. All right. Let's see here. And we move on to page 14. This is all kind of the existing stuff. I did in the tables. As we get into it, we got, we're adding that extra. Residential districts, we added that into the table. We also added the I-1 district in there. Under signs permitted in the agricultural district. You know, we've got that one in the middle about lots of 10,000 to 20,000 square feet. I don't think there's any lots in the egg district that size. So I just said anything under, you know, I kind of took it out because them are bigger lots, you know, in some cases 80 acres. So. So we got that there.
John, for the agricultural district, just because we had this not too long ago, the hedges sign.
Yep.
That was 32 square feet in size that we granted a variance for. So I just want to bring up for discussion maximum air, sign area of a single sign. We just recently gave a variance for that.
I mean, if we want to adjust that upwards, we can. I mean, it's.
Notes I, so I guess notes in here, if it's less than 20,000 square feet, six feet, that's three by two. If you're talking on an agricultural site. I would recommend 12 on that. So it's a four by three with 24 square feet total. Just in the egg areas, there's much more space. And then for greater than 20,000, since we just approved that variance for hedges, up that to 36 with a maximum of 60.
Total area of all signs, 60?
Yeah.
So then we got to move total area of all signs for the lots under 20,000 to.
24?
Keep it just 24. If there's only one sign then.
Sorry, for the maximum air of a single sign for less than 20,000 square feet, go from six to 12 and then from 12 to 24.
Oh, six to 12 and then.
12 to 24 is doubling those.
Okay. We can do that. All right. I think the rest was pretty straightforward. And then we got page 15. It just, it specifies a bunch of the existing language.
Another question I had for under K, science permitting, commercial, industrial and public institutional districts. I was thinking about. Down just next to the car wash, you have butternut tree with the multiple sweets in there. And they all have signs on there. How do we? Do we want to think about how we want to treat those with sweet breakdowns or Brad Quas' building that where they might want signs?
A different sign for each one, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I thought, okay, so.
And if I missed those and those got covered?
What? Yeah. So under the next page, we have the master common sign plans required. I don't know if we can address that in that where, you know, because like on a commercial building has multiple tenants, you're, each one's going to have a sign. That's kind of a given. I don't think anyone.
Okay.
Addresses that. So I don't know. I don't believe that affects. What we're doing because in the commercial districts, we have total signage on the, on the property, max an area of a single sign, you know, so you could do multiple signs. Okay, that prevents it.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Because they have a total square footage. I can't, you know, exceed overall.
Got it.
Typically, I keep them all the same size or whatever it is. So.
Sounds good.
All right. So that's kind of those three sections that we were, had to clean up from the previous stuff. And then we're talking about the zoning districts. So we're into the next section of the code. This is the zoning districts in that. And to start with, I kind of added, you know, the, the, basically what it is from, you know, what the zoning districts are about. So we have a table there that shows all the existing ones. I've kind of adjusted it. We added the R4 and the I-1. And then we've adjusted a couple of names. So like. Low density, we put a single family because, you know, we're looking at the R1, R2, R3, R4 districts tonight and the agricultural. And then I also got the planning development language. And just so you know, the planning development language is done. I want to say like five, six years ago, I think that was all updated at that point. So we're not really adjusting that because that was done recent and it's all a new update. And if you remember back then, I don't know how many guys were on the, I don't think any were on the planning commission back then, maybe I can't remember, but there was actually a PUD overlay and a PUD district. Which conflicted with each other, but it's like there was two different districts in your codes. So we basically took them, combined everything into one and made it a true overlay district, which is what we're kind of using with our city right now. And that, that seems to work. So we didn't really have to do a lot of adjustments on that. But so with the residential districts. The low density becomes a single family and all we're going to allow in that district is single family homes. The R2 is single two family residential district. So this will allow. A mixture, which we kind of have this district now. That district currently also allows for some of townhomes up to four units. We're actually pushing the townhomes into the R3 district and we're having a two family and townhouse residential district. And then we have a multiple family district, which would be like your apartments, seeing your housing, you know, condos, different things of that nature. So we've got. You know, kind of a little mixture. The R1, R2, you can have in, you know, single family in both cases. They get to some different lot sizes and we'll touch on that shortly here. So. Social zoning map or basically just updating the zoning map, you know, language. So what it titled, you know, when this is all said and done, if we add some of these districts, we may have to do like a. A map amendment to some of these districts on the map actually, but we can talk about that at a later date. Then interpretation of the zoning districts map. So this kind of gives some language, basically kind of updated some of the stuff here, but we had this in place. Basically, it gives you the, you know, if you have a question about what's zoned what, then here's how you determine it based on, you know, whether it's a buddy in an alley, right of way, railroad, different things of that nature. You know, areas underwater, which is really the only areas, the river, the Crowering River out there. You don't have any lakes or anything of that nature that become protected water. Now, as the city expands. You've got what Goose Lake and a few of the lakes out in the outskirts that may eventually 50 years from now be part of the city, but who knows? But for now, we don't have to worry about that. So basically it just kind of gives how you interpret all these boundaries. The annexation section, which is currently existing as well. Basically, we're saying upon annexation, everything's going to be classified A1 agricultural district. Now, obviously, it would be subject to that, but when land comes in, we're going to kind of know what they're looking to do with it for the most part, or, you know, is it going to be an existing residential property that just needs or septic's failing? They need to hook up. So the annex, we may zone that R1 right with the annexation or something like that. Or we know the developer's coming in. So when the annexation is approved, we're going to actually zone it. To what their proposal is. So there might be some ability to do that during the annexation, but a typical annexation goes to A1, then it can adjust the rezon at a later date. That would follow what our comp plan addresses. So we have a land use plan. You know, our low density, median density and high density in our residential, some of these districts can fall into different categories potentially. So. We'll have to address that individually on each specific property, but for now, we'll just start with the A1 and kind of go from there. So that gives the city the most ability. Now, the A1 district is the first districts we're talking about here. Basically, the, the one thing I want to do with every district to keep it consistent is we're going to have a purpose and, you know, what used to be called intent. Then we're going to have permitted uses, permitted accessory uses, conditional uses, interim uses, uses and uses by administrative permit. So every district will now have those specific categories. Right now, some districts have them, some districts don't. It's not consistent all the way through. In some cases, we don't have interim uses in a specific zoning district. So we'll just keep it there and say none at this time. And down the road, if something comes up or we need to add it with a text amendment, we can add it at that point, but that section does exist for that to work in. So. Basically, the purpose of the A1 district is to recognize the existing agricultural use or the land of the land. I should, that's a typo actually. Of the land and provide for an orderly means whereby lands in the city can be preserved in an undeveloped state. Until development at urban densities with public sewer and water as used as defined in by the city's comprehensive plan. So. It kind of acts as almost like a, some people call it transition zone, but you can have egg land that the current uses. And when they're ready to develop and they sell the property, that would then get rezoned to. R1, you know, R whatever, commercial, whatever it ends up being. So.
So is all my stuff grandfathered in?
In the city, you mean? The stuff in the city?
Or outside the city. I guess the city is now looking to change my egg land into non-residential and Hollywood Township, matter of fact.
Well, we don't control your land that's outside the city because it's not under our zoning jurisdiction.
That's what I thought. So Philip, with your, in our easement, I had 48 acre piece that in our easement is 40 acres of, 48 acres of my egg land. And then it went and got changed to non-agricultural or non-resi, non-homestead.
Is that on the stuff in the city or outside the city?
I just got the notice on my tax statement. It's in Hollywood Township.
Okay.
It's part of the reason why I'm here. And it got, the value shoots up to 900,000. So all of a sudden. My remaining seven acres of land that I have. Is worth what? 125,000 bucks an acre, which you know what? Which is pretty cool because if you guys want to put in like a golf course or something, I guess now you've set the, set the price date.
But if it's in Hollywood Township, we have no control.
Well, okay, so then, so. The initiated. Easement from your splash pad, Nick. How did that wind up on my property up there?
So.
40 acres of.
So tonight's meeting is not for a public back and forth. We're specifically here. No, it's not on the agenda. So tonight we're talking about the proposed updates to the zoning ordinance, not a litany of back and forth water cooler session with members of the public.
Yeah. So the zoning ordinance is only for properties within the city or the annexation area in the east, northeast side of town, which we have an agreement with that township for zoning control over about 10 properties.
So quick touch back on if there was something done on the area north of city limits, which is where your property is, that would have to be either Hollywood or the county initiated something.
Yeah. Nothing to do with the city there.
Yeah, well, they, they did. Kind of called all my easement land along the road. That, say you guys loaned out all of my. I don't know if you guys are aware, but way back when, when the bar troops and clowns went in, the city failed to get a survey. So they thought that they owned all the way to the river and Benny Quas, who was a county. On board with it. So part of these settled after they lost and had paid damages, the city rather than, because by the land they gave. Benny, all the easement land along the road and along the rail line. So the city doesn't own any of that. Okay?
So that really doesn't pertain to anything we're talking about on the agenda.
Well, it does because your map's wrong.
So the map's not on the agenda. We're talking about specific sections of a proposed ordinance that are coming up.
Okay. So then back to the agricultural district. So we got the permitted, we're on top of page 18, the permitted uses. Basically, you know, we've got a bunch of them that are existing, single family homes are allowed in there. You know, it kind of adjusted like, you know, the public parks had trails, playgrounds, things of that nature. So basically adjusted that. We have permitted accessory uses and we have some of them that are being taken out. We kind of updated this and this is going to be consistent all the way through every district. So we have the same language addressed when it's the same thing. We don't want, you know, one says solar energy system and then some will say, you know, something else. And it's just different across. So we want to be consistent through all. That's what we're doing there. So if you see anything under these uses, like the daycare facilities, fences, roadside, you know, all this stuff. That you want to add or you don't want, or you want to take out, you know, we need to know that. Conditional uses, you got the wind energy conversion systems mounted on a tower. That'd be like your, you know, windmill type stuff. And there's a section in the code addressing that. You know, specifics on height and all that sort of stuff. That's existing already at this point. So, so we need to put that stuff in here. And then farm buildings for keeping animals. That's obviously a conditional use permit. We want to talk about that if, you know, because there's very little land that's agricultural right now within the city itself. But we do have control over some of that township land up in the northeast part of the town there. So. Interim uses is another one. The only one we really have on that for the egg district is landfilling or land exgrading. This includes like mining. So if somebody wanted to put in a gravel pit or something, let's say. You have the ability to do that in that egg district, which is pretty common for most cities. Gravel pits are an interim use because ultimately when the gravel's gone, they fill it over, they reclaim it. And I know. A lot of areas like Apple Valley, Rosemont area, they got a lot of gravel pits. A lot of those are being finished up now and they're starting to develop them over. And there's massive developments going on. These old gravel pits have been mined for 50 years. And now it's becoming development because the gravel's used up. So, so that's kind of why it's an interim use. The administrative permit, this is something that we added early on when we went through the initial stuff in the ordinance under the. Administration enforcement. So we added administrative permits. This is like when there's a permit that comes in that doesn't come to planning commission or it's not a conditional use or permitted use. Staff can approve it and review it and approve the type of permit without having to do, you know, a bunch of extra steps. So in this case, for instance, in this district, we're doing like essential services. Essential services, if you look at the definition, is basically your phone, cable, electric. Phone, cable, electric, gas, things of that nature. So we can get approval. If a new development comes in, they have to put that in once the streets are built. You know, we have the ability just to address that um, individually here at city hall without having to go through a planning commissioner council to deal with that. So a city engineer most likely would look at the designs and things of that nature. Um, and then we got the lots and requirements section. So this will be in every. District as well, and we kind of to keep everything consistent again. So. Basically, uh, the, the stuff we have right now is currently, and I just got a print of it here, it's currently in a table. So if you look in each district, you don't see what the setbacks are. You don't see what the lot sizes are. So I'm going to put it in each section. So there's an actual section there that we can dress. So if you're looking at the A one. You don't know about this table in the code. You're like, well, what's the lot size? So we can still add if you feel like we want to have a table at the end of this. Just for somebody to reference every district. So we can put that together. Yeah.
Could we have it at the front?
We could do it at the front as well, either way.
When I go look at code, I'm, at least us as staff, we go right to that.
Yep.
We reference that all the time, just as a quick reference chart.
Yep.
Would you be able to put the map of the city then?
Like in the, in the zoning district itself?
Yeah.
I mean, it's not going to be in the code, but there is a map that would be potentially online.
Correlate with it, okay.
Yeah, that would correlate. I mean, the zoning map that's existing is online and.
Okay, that's what I mean. Like. For our next zoning, I know we're talking about districts and stuff, if we can have that map in there so we have a reference. I know you're going to have it up there, but it'd be nice to have it in the packet too.
Oh, gotcha. Yep. Oh, yeah. Okay. The map that we're talking about.
Yep.
All right. So then with this uh, district, we're not really adjusting much. You know, we're kind of keeping. You know, it shows them underlying, but they are in the table at this, at this requirement right now. Um, the only thing that we looked at adjusting was accessory buildings. Right now I think we're at seventeen feet and we've had a couple of men or variances for, you know, a little bit higher. So we did adjust it upwards to twenty. And I think we've had like handful in the last few years, to be honest with you, for. Detached garages exceeding seventeen feet. So, so that's the only thing that was adjusted accordingly was the accessory.
On those accessory buildings, Ryan, quick question for you as a contractor. Uh, for detached garages that would want to house an R V. What sort of building height on those are we typically looking at?
Twelve foot door and then plus the, you know, if you have a. You're going to have a minimum of five pitch for your roof. You need probably depending how long it is, at least a forty or fifty foot building lengthwise.
Height?
Height. Well, that's what I'm getting at. I'm just, so. You're pushing the twenty feet. I mean, it's probably going to be more like twenty-five, thirty feet. I mean, I can measure where I'm at and I could get back to you.
And this is for the egg district. So we, you know, this is, you know, about the farmstead or, you know, property out in the country. If we want to go a little higher, this would be the place to do it in my mind.
Yeah, because your normal walls are sixteen foot tall for egg pole barns. Then you got another ten feet. I mean, you're looking at twenty, thirty feet minimum probably.
And remember egg buildings related to farming activities, we have a fifty foot minimum because that could be a big barn or a silo or, or whatever. But these would be just some typical accessory building like a detached garage or.
Yeah, I apologize. I'm jumping the gun. I'm starting to think of R one here.
Twenty's probably good for R one.
Yeah.
Then like we just had the various request for that stick build.
Yep.
But I mean. You don't have too many lots in town that are able to be able to hold the building like that either.
No.
That's what? Two, three, five acres? What is that up there?
That's probably two and a half at least, probably.
On the bigger side.
Yeah, so.
I just want to make sure we brought up since we've had a variance or two on it.
I think you'd be fine with twenty and then if they call for a variance, we'll deal with it.
Okay, that's in the residential. What about the egg district though?
Fifty.
Find their twenty as well. Okay.
Okay.
We'll leave that. All right. The next district's the R one and we're changing this to a single family district. Um, so basically. The R one, uh, the purpose is, uh, you know, pretty much what we're leaving alone is to provide an option for low density, single family detached residential dwelling units. And directly related complimentary uses, you know, what should be like your detached garage, things of that nature. Uh, permitted uses were basically, you know, parks, trails. Uh, single family detached dwelling units and then a residential facility serving six or fewer people. And a single family, this is through state statute that we're required to do that. So. Um, that's going to be even there as well. We got your permitted accessory uses. And these are typical uses you'll find in, in an R one district. Um, conditional would be religious institutions. Uh, this would be like a church or something of that nature. So a lot of times those are located in residential areas. So we do allow that as a conditional use. Uh, they came in as a conditional use. We do have the extra set, set, uh, setback that's listed in there. Which will be the same as the front yard at thirty feet. Um, there's also. A lot coverage, things and stuff of that nature. They have to deal with, they have to deal with parking. So they have to have a lot big enough to potentially do it. So that is something that can be done. Uh, no interim uses at this time doesn't mean something couldn't be added in the future. The administrative permit, uh, model homes. Uh, essential services and then temporary structures, um, as related to that section that we've already kind of gone through. Model home would be like in a newer development. Sometimes they'll put a model home up. And it's uh, set up separately, um, differently, I should say. As you know, typical home, a lot of times it's converted into a house once the sales in that neighborhood are done. If you go back years ago, the Fieldstone neighborhood had the model home up on highway seven. Um, in that building, you know, that kind of would address that too. So they had their sales center up there, but they were building further south in town. But ultimately that whole area was part of that original development and obviously they all fully developed, but. Um, lot requirements. So right now our R one district is ten thousand square feet, eighty-five feet wide. Um, I've gone down to, or went to ten thousand five hundred. So we're actually enlarging it, but the reason we're doing that is our R two. Is going to allow for some smaller lots. So. In newer neighborhoods, there's kind of going to be an option. Do they want R one, R two? Uh, we can have a zoning, you know, our zoning map shows certain things right now, but it gives the ability to potentially adjust that. Uh, we also add a lot, uh, area for corner lots, which would be a little bit bigger. Lot width is at eighty feet. So I actually dropped that down five from eighty-five. Ever since the zoning has gone in R one to eighty-five feet, the city has never done one eighty-five foot lot under that district. Everything that's been done has gone back to the old number of seventy-five feet. Um, which have been like um, Coldwater Crossing, Hidden Creek, uh, those areas. So there's never actually been an eighty-five foot lot developed. Under the current zoning that's there right now. So to me that. You know, in the, in the development world for residential, lot sizes are getting smaller and narrower. Um, just based on infrastructure costs and trying to keep things affordable. So uh. Lot width on a quarter ninety-five, the front setbacks thirty, which is current, uh, side setbacks ten, which is current number. And then um. Side yard on a corner lot is twenty-five feet, rear yard's thirty, lot coverage thirty-five percent and the height. Um, I went to the twenty feet there. So. Do they even have any thoughts on the district sizes or I should say lot sizes in the R one district? We're a little bit bigger on the square footage, but a little bit smaller on the width. And realistically, when you're eighty-five feet, ten thousand square feet. Your depth ends up being wider anyways. Typically an eighty-five foot lot's more like a, a twelve thousand or eleven thousand square foot lot. So um, I guess the question is made, do we want to go even, you know, are we fine with seventy-five? For the R one, because that's what you call water crossing and, and Hidden Creek is.
Was everything going to come in at seventy-five anyway? And we're going to have to approve it at that point or?
I mean, if somebody comes in with a, and they want to do straight zoning, they have to either meet these requirements or they have to go through a planning development. The planning development gives the ability to the city to potentially. Request additional things such as landscaping trees, uh, more parkland preserve, you know, that like little area. Um, exterior requirements on the house, you know, extra stone brick, whatever. You know, I'm not personally, I mean, it's all nice, but I don't like cities doing too much on the house side. You see it with townhomes and stuff like that, but the single family. You know, it's, I don't know. It's, it's everyone's opinion, I guess, but um. I don't know. It's up to you guys what you want to do, I guess, and how you want to go with the sizes.
With the, with the developments you're already talking about that we've got that are seventy-five foot yards is there? Any concession that we got out of there that was worth?
The, so when both of those went through, um, if you remember right, they were already graded out. So we were basically going back to the, the plan that was approved that it expired over time. And in both cases, lots went to the bank, went to the sellers. Those sellers then sold the lot or the bank sold the lot to the new developer. They came in and basically want to do exactly what was there previously. Which made sense at the time because it was, in most cases it was already graded. You know, why are we trying to recreate something? It was, the whole neighborhood was already designed that way. So let's just keep the balance, you know, it's the last few phases. Obviously Coldwater Crossing has additional phases still to come. But in Hidden Creek's case, I think they did two or three more phases, if I remember right. And why change the lot size in the neighborhood when the rest of the neighborhood already had that size? So. So there wasn't a ton on concessions that the city asked for because of that. So. Um, all right. Well, maybe I'll just talk about the R two. Uh, real quick. The purpose of this is to provide for low to medium density. This allows for like your twin homes. So really the uh, um, one thing we're adding to the R two is another type of. Unit, which is a townhouse detached only. And what this is, is a really common product nowadays. Some people call them villa homes or patio homes. It's a, it's a single family detached structure, but it's designed like a townhome where you potentially have common area around the top, the units. Which gets maintained and owned by homeowners association. So it's, a townhouse typically comes in and that's the case, they'll have their homeowners. These are done the same way and it's a very, one of the more popular type of housing that's out there nowadays. Yes.
Is it kind of like the ones off of eleven and seven there, um, by Matt, New McIntunes? Those ones that are on the front, on the seven on the north side there?
No, I think these are more like the ones by Target and the villas up in Fieldstone on Cinnamon Point.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The ones in the Target, ones by Niconia, that's exactly what this is.
Okay.
So the ones up Cinnamon Point, I'm not sure what there's, you know, they don't have common area on the lots.
No, okay.
It was originally supposed to be though, I think.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was. So it's, yeah, that's, that's what we're talking about here. So. You know, to talk about that, we, you know, I'll get into the language here in a second, but uh, where was I? Losing my spot. Um. Okay, here we go. So we got single family detached. Townhomes, uh, detached and then two family dwellings, which would be like a twin home. So that would be allowed in the R two. So it gives additional density. Which can allow the developer to actually, you know, get some at, you know, smaller lots, things like that. Um, the permitted accessory uses, conditional uses and all that stuff is pretty much the same as the R one. But then the lot requirements, we have a lot area of eight thousand four hundred square feet. And we have setbacks. And by the way, going back to the R one at eighty feet with ten foot setbacks. That allows for a sixty foot wide building pad. This one is sixty-five feet wide with seven and a half foot side yard setbacks allows for a fifty foot building pad. A fifty foot building pad, you can still do a typical single family house with a three car garage. Um, it's a pretty common uh, size out there. Um, so you can do it, just a smaller lot allows for that. Um, lot corners and all that as different things, uh, you know, lot width. You know, the setbacks are all a little bit less as well. So we're going with the front, so it'd be in thirty, it's twenty-five. The sides are, so it'd be in ten or seven and a half. Um, side yard instead of being twenty-five, adjacent streets twenty, in the rear, we're keeping at thirty. Lot coverage actually bumps up because the lot gets a little bit smaller. So we're going to bump this up to forty percent. And then the maximum building height stuff stays the same. And then detached townhouses and two family dwellings. Uh, this is where we talk about unit lots and then base lots. So you have the base lot is kind of your overall. Footprint um, on that block. Your unit lot is the actual little square box that goes around the structure itself. So a lot of times. The homeowners own just the little square box. The association owns the base lot around it. And a lot of, sometimes the association allows the pet, like a concrete patio in the rear to encroach into it. Sometimes they don't. Typically you want to keep everything the structure owns. Yeah, there, there you go. So um. That neighborhood was kind of designed that way. You got these little units. With the common area around it. So what we're doing is we're actually putting language into this district. To allow for that type of development to happen without having to go through the plan unit development. So um, it has those requirements in there. So it talks about what those. Requirements are, you got base lots, setbacks, all that sort of thing, building setbacks. Um, you know, this is like internally, uh, on a detached townhome, we're basically saying. You know, if you have individual squares for each unit, we want to keep fourteen feet between the buildings. That'd be a seven and a seven, you know, the typical single family seven and a half. So we're very similar to that. Um, those base lot. Sizes on a, on a design like this, we're not technically putting a minimum on there. So if they have a plan that comes in. And it's, you know, if this is what we want to do, the city has the ability to prove it that way. And we don't have to deal with all the planning development. That's the one thing. Planning developments. Are a good tool, but you don't, you want to have zoning districts that actually allow for housing that developers want to build. So this kind of gives that option. Section three then talks about the common area and the ownership and the association and all that that goes along with it. Um, so basically it talks about, you know, the ownership within the R, R two. It's either under the common interest community. Or detached townhouse and two family base lot common areas shall be owned by the owners of each lot unit. So. Basically, you know, the common areas that association and it kind of addresses that. And then we have some specific setbacks on. Trying to think here. I think we have a. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong page. Sorry. Go on to page twenty. I was looking at page twenty. I was like, this is confusing. Um, but it talks about the architectural modifications. Uh, development density. So then what limits the size is the development density. So we're saying in a detached townhouse. Or a two family dwelling, they have to have five thousand square feet per unit. So it's not like they can put them down to like twenty-two feet wide by forty feet deep and that's all they want. They have to still have a, a minimum amount of size per their lot. So that's kind of the artificial way of restricting how. Low they can really go. So if they don't have that five thousand square feet. They can't allow it. The city has to approve that. Um, and it has to be bigger than that. So. Now that's kind of the R two district. As we get into the R three. This is where we have townhomes attached, which is like a typical townhome unit and a townhome detached. Which now we have definitions that are in the code, which we previously went over, um, that address those types of things. And in the R three, we're law, you know, we won't allow single family now because this is getting to be more of a. Two family townhouse development, single families are R one, R two, twin homes are R two, R three, townhomes are. Um, detached are R two, R three, attached are the R three. Um, as well, but we'll also allow those townhomes detached with they have the common area. So it does allow for a mixture. Of housing types in that district. Uh, townhouse is up to six units in a row or eight units back to back. Um, I want to bring that up because as we get into the R four district, we're going to allow townhouses in that. But we can go up to twelve units back to back. I think it's eight in a row. So we can allow a bigger building at that time. So we're kind of. Gradually ramping up the intensity or the density as we go up into districts here. So. Um. Basically, uh, the other thing we want to put in there in the uh, R three district is um. Not more than one, or more than one principal building on a base lot. And I don't think we had that on the uh, other one because they're all kind of individual uh, with that. But on a base lot. You know, you've got that, you've got like, what is that? Six buildings around that base lot. So that's kind of what this is allowing. Um, that we're kind of doing it that way. And also when you get into apartments, sometimes they'll have multiple billions on one lot. Out there and it's a rental, you know, complex. So we don't have a specific lot for each building. And in those cases, a lot of times you have one set of services going into the building and it services the entire building. A lot of times on townhomes. Or in this case, they have two sets of services, one for each side of the townhouse or the, the twin home. Same with the six unit building. They'll have a set of services in each individual structure. So that owner can take ownership of it and then have their own water sewer bills, their own electric service, their own stuff. Where you get in the big apartments. That's all usually done at one time and it's just part of the overall monthly rent, rent uh, that goes with that unit. So. Um, so R three, that's kind of what we're dealing with here is a little bit higher. Now we've also jumped up the residential facilities, the sixteen units or fewer. Because it's more of a higher density type designation. Um, once again, the permitted accessory uses, conditional uses. Um, stuff like that is all pretty much the same. The thing we are adding here, um, in the conditional is uh. Uh, manufactured home parks, um, which is something that. It's not common out there, but there are a few. I know Mankato's had, or actually I think North Mankato's had a couple of them in recent years. Um, and then we have a whole manufactured home park section that'll address the details of what you have to do on that. So. Um, now these used to be called mobile home parks where right now it's called manufactured home. Um, so there's specifics on that. That's where you don't own the, the lot itself, but you own the structure. Um, so that's. Not saying it's never going to happen, but the odds of it happening are pretty little, are pretty slim. And you know, M H manufactured home park overlay district of this chapter. So we have a whole chapter that. I guess we'll get into it tonight. Now, first of all, before we go down that road, what's your opinion on allowing that, I guess? It'll only be allowed in these certain zoning districts, the R three and the R four. No?
No.
Nope.
All right.
Can we flat out not allow?
You can take them out. I wanted to add it for discussion because it is something that, that, that most cities have as an option. So.
I'm good.
Okay. Well, save time before I go into all the detail, I guess we'll take that out.
The quickest decision you get out of it, so yeah.
Yeah. Everyone's on the same page there, I guess. So. Most cities that have these already have an existing one in, in the city. So that's kind of why they address that. In, in Mayor's case, we don't. So. All right. Um, so that's that. Uh. All right, where were we here? Uh, interim uses, administrative permit uses, that's kind of the same. And the lot requirements and setbacks. So this is the whole section here that's kind of similar to the R two district. Um, we don't have specific lot sizes because in a lot of cases you're dealing with this, there really is no, you gotta have a certain acreage. It just is kind of based on the design because those base lots are kind of separate from the rest of it. But we got unit lots and the base lots and we got specific setbacks on that. Building setbacks, detached townhome and two family fourteen feet between the structures. Again, uh, townhouse, we're putting twenty feet between the structures. So if you have a roll townhome, a six unit one, you have to have twenty feet then another six unit building, you could do that. Now they can go down to, you know, a lot of times if they only have enough room for a four or three, they might do that on those roll townhomes as well, but we're allowing them up to six. Do you have any preference on allowing more, more of that like we are in the R four? I mean, it's really all right or wrong, I guess, but it's just trying to kind of gradually increase the density. Okay, we'll stay with what we got. Building setback. Uh, now remember in some of these cases, you could have private drives too. So yeah, in this case, it's a public street. So you have your setbacks that are typical for a public street. Uh, in the private street section, typically that allows you to kind of squeeze things because in a public street, you have your street, which is typically a thirty two foot wide street back to back from the curb. And your public right of way is sixty feet. So you have these boulevards, which is where, you know, the, the services are, electric, gas, things like that. Um, on a private street, typically you do a setback right from the curb to the structure. It allows for additional density to do the private street. So what we're saying is um, buildings shall be setback a minimum of twenty five feet from the back of curb line of private drives or twenty five feet from the public right of way and fifteen feet from guest parking area. So a lot of times um, there's none here, but a lot of times in a townhome development, um, sometimes they have a smaller garage, things like that. They'll put a little area where they put guest parking. You know, there might be six stalls here, seven stalls over there. So we want to have setbacks. So these structures right up aren't are right art, are right not up against those parking areas. So they have room for snow storage and things like that. Um, and also twenty five feet from the right of way means their driveway is going to be twenty five feet plus whatever that boulevard is. So you might have a forty foot driveway, let's say. If you're twenty five feet from behind curb, you basically just got the twenty foot, five foot driveway, which allows for a big truck to park in there and that'd be about it on, on that driveway surface. So. Maximum billing height, thirty five feet or three stories, whichever is less. Same with the accessory structures again. That hasn't really changed at all through this. We're going to keep that the same through all the residential stuff. Uh, the common area language, this is basically the same as the previous district. Um, so we're not going to um, touch on that anymore, but the, the language hasn't really adjusted. Uh, the dev, development density will keep the detached townhouse and two families at five thousand. And then townhouse dwellings, and I should put attached in there. That's a three thousand eight hundred square feet uh, per unit. That gives you a lot, a little bit more density. Typically in a townhome development, you're going to be able to get more units, you know, packed in there than to say a two family or these uh, detached townhomes. Like I said, these numbers, the five thousand and thirty eight hundred doesn't have to be that. It's a pretty common number. I've seen in quite a few other communities. You know, some cities I've seen sixty five, up to sixty five hundred before for twin homes, and I've seen less than thirty eight hundred for townhomes. So it's just, you know, like I said, it's kind of just the right feel for where you're at. And this, you know, allows for some development, you know, some density if somebody want to do that type of neighborhood and a big thing now is these types of units from affordability standpoint, there's people going to that. Um, the one I'm seeing is the single family detached townhome. And they're, they're trying to really get price point on there. So they're doing slab on grade, two story, single family homes. And then these small little narrow lots, and they're actually competing with townhome neighborhoods. Um, and in some cases they don't have associations if they're doing this in a straight lot. But we have restrictions on that, I guess, too. We could do that through a plan unit development, which is what most communities allow. So. Then design and construction standards. So on twin homes and single family, we're not going to be too picky about, like I talked about this earlier, about what's going to be on the exterior of the structure. As we start getting into townhouses, I think the city does want to have some, you know, ability to address that through their approval. So uh, basically we have some, you know, general requirements without getting too crazy on this. You know, basically the detached tunnels and two families plan into a unit and base and tunnels dwellings, they show, single family are exempt from requirement of this section. Basically subdivision requests, uh, and floor plans shall be furnished to the city for the review. They shall include exterior building material and colors to demonstrate compliance with the current code. Decks and porches um, shall be made possible that they are part of the initial dwelling. Uh, unit uh, building plans and the unit lot shall be configured in size to include the decks or porch. So I kind of mentioned this before, and you can see some of the concrete patios encroach outside the lot area. What we're saying is when you design this, we want to make sure that you oversize that lot to include, you know, typically a ten or twelve foot concrete patio. Include that in the lot because that is private. You know, part of that private ownership of that structure. People will have patio furniture and things like that on there. You don't necessarily have to do that, but just to include it is the right thing to do. So most of these would have room to extend them lot lines, another ten feet to include that. So just everyone be aware of that. Exterior billing finished, uh, basically just include that. It needs to be variation of billing materials, which is distributed throughout the billing elevations. Uh, basically this could be, you know, board and batten above the garage, some brick or stone on the, you know, you know, if you have a porch column or something of that nature, different things like that. So you don't have all vinyl all the way around the tire structure. We want to just mix up, especially on the front elevation. So. Uh, garages, um, each shall include, uh, each dwelling unit shall include an attached garage. And then we kind of got the size standards for dwellings with uh, basements, four hundred and forty square feet for without basements, four hundred and eighty square feet. Uh, the reason we did that a little bit bigger without basements is because, you know, if you got people that typically need storage space, if you're losing that extra level of floor area, you're going to lose some storage area. So we want to go with a little bit bigger garage. I don't know if there was any opinions on that or not, but that'd be like your slab on grade would just be a little bit bigger structure. So. Or a little bigger garage, I should say. Uh, shall be a minimum of twenty feet in width measured by interior dimensions. Twenty feet in width would be a typical two car garage. Um, you know, sometimes it'll be twenty two or twenty four wide, but twenty, you can get two small cars in a garage like that. That typically would be uh, for, you know, townhomes. Uh, the question I have is some townhomes now you're seeing a one stall garage. Do you have any opinions on allowing a one stall garage? No?
No.
Okay, we'll leave it what we got then. Outside storage shall only be allowed in a designated area, which are screened in accordance with uh, the outside storage of this chapter. Um, so basically if somebody is in an area, you know, if they've got a, a property like you see on the screen, they want to put something outside, we want to make sure it's screened accordingly. You know, based on what the outdoor storage uh, regulations are. So just so that's addressed. Utilities serving in our three district subdivision, including telephone, electric, gas, cable, uh, shall be installed underground. Um, each exterior uh, utility meters and our fixtures shall be located on the side of rear yards if possible. Um, public utility service uh, shall be provided to each unit unless exempted by the city. So basically when we say exempt that, we want every unit to have their own services. That's typically how you do it, water, sewer and private utilities. There are cases where I've seen rental structures like a four unit building and they put one set of services into the entire structure and they only need one set of meters. That's a true rental unit. That's done typically on one lot. You don't subdivide each of the individual units. So if it's done that way, they can do that through a plan unit development. And we could potentially exempt that as part of that process, but other than that, we are going to require individual, which is typically the way most of this stuff is built. So. Um, and then you get into that other deal, you'd potentially have condominium type things that come into play, but we won't go down that road tonight if that does come up. So. Uh, where are we here? Uh, streets or, you know, water sewer connection, um, that'll be individual to each unit. Uh, streets shall be public and shall comply with design standards and city specs, except that a required right of way may be reduced to fifty feet. And the required street width reduced to twenty eight feet back to back by conditional use permit. Do we want to allow that or do you just want to keep it? I know in a P U D, that's typically addressed. A lot of times they'll ask for a fifty foot right of way versus a sixty. Um, the help of density and obviously, you know, being in the seven county metro, the Met Council does have some, has jurisdiction out here. Met Council is very big on density in today's world. Uh, they probably don't see it as much out here, but there are developers that are doing single family neighborhoods and they are literally denying them right now because they can't get the three units an acre with their single family lots. So be aware that Met Council's really been cracking down on that. And they're going to a higher density in the next complaint go around, just so you know. It's going to be three and a half units an acre versus three, which it is now. So. So I don't know. If you guys want this, we can keep it. If we not, we can take it out and just deal with it through a P U D, I guess. This gives the ability in the R three district to potentially allow for some of this without having to go through the planning development, but if the city wants planning development on this, we can do that.
Because they can't make it work with the normal street widths, you're saying?
It's, it's not that they can't make it with, with normal ones. It's about um, density, getting more units, and it's all about cost effectiveness. Um, if you, if you can get an extra ten or fifteen units by going a little bit narrow on your streets and doing some of this stuff, that's for a developer, that's all, that, that might be enough between make or break on the project. So um, if the city wants to keep it through a P U D, we'll just take this language out. Some cities are hard line on that and they never will budge. Some cities will allow all sorts of things. I mean, I see streets where you got a fifty foot right of way, tiny to another development on a sixty. There's no rhyme or reason what they're doing, but they're doing it. So.
I would say we need to stay consistent, but.
That's what I would say. I mean, let's be honest, I've seen the neighborhoods already. And how many people don't park on the streets? And you narrow that road, fire trucks already barely can get through.
And plow trucks.
And plow trucks.
A lot of time twenty eight feet is one side parking too.
Now that makes a difference if they actually listen to the ones. I don't know. I say stay consistent.
I agree.
I agree.
We can take it out and then we'll just deal with it during planning development if they, you know. I think you will. I do, I do think you might see that, that there might be some requests to go with the right of way with, especially on like cul-de-sacs. Which I tend to agree, a cul-de-sac, the, the, not the bubble itself, but the neck where you know, the street that through the bubble. There's really no need to have that at sixty feet. A lot of cases on cul-de-sacs, it's limited, sometimes only five houses or six houses on there. So, you know, it does give a little extra room in some cases for yards and people do things with their house and stuff, but.
Yeah, I think as far as street sizing, it depends how it's servicing, whatever it's going to. If it's going through an area to get to another area, you're going to want a wider street.
But if it's like a little side street or a little loop or something in the neighborhood.
But if it just goes to morning drive, for example, and those are the only ones it's going to service, then I could see allowing a narrower street.
Right.
Providing they're also showing it.
Yep.
Off street in some ways to compensate for the lack of on street.
Yeah. One thing I always say too is uh, when you're dealing with streets, you know, eventually the developer puts them in, but eventually the city will have to maintain that, which means seal coating thirty, forty, fifty years down the road reconstruction. And the bigger the street, the more cost effect is going to be. Now, one thing that the city of Bell Plain, I don't know if you're familiar with this. They prided themselves when they did their original downtown area plat from a hundred and fifty years ago, whatever it was. Everything they did was an eighty foot wide street with like a forty foot wide or eighty foot wide right away with forty foot wide street. Typical is sixty and thirty two. And when they go and reconstruct, their costs are so, they want to keep it because that's just their thing, but they don't realize how much additional cost is involved with that extra eight feet of pavement and all that extra width on that street. So it's a lot of cost. So, so I'm just saying, cities always got to remember there is a maintenance thing down the road too, but. All right. Um, so drives, so this is kind of like in a townhouse development. Uh, if you've got a dead end private drive, certain maximum one structure or six units per side. You know, like a lot of times you'll have like a public street and they put little stub like they're curved, but they're a little like a private drive, part of the association. We're just saying you're going to do the one six, you know, we don't want to have it like a super long street with all these units down there for fire protection and things like that, emergency services. So we're limiting that. Um, private drives under the control and ownership of the properties association shall be responsible for maintenance repair. Um, shall put a capital improvement program in place. They have money available for that down the road. Uh, we don't want to have the city have to come in and, and help fund things if the streets are falling apart. Uh, that has something that happened in the years past. Nowadays with the, the requirements upfront, typically it's pretty good at getting this stuff into play. Must include areas for snow storage and shall be a minimum of twenty four feet wide. So these private drives, um, which aren't, it's kind of like a, a souped up driveway that serves multiple units. Twenty four feet is enough for two cars to go one way, but it doesn't allow for parking. So people will back out of their, say, garage onto the private drive, then go out to the main road off that private drive. And these are very common. You see them pretty much in tunnels developments everywhere. So. Guest parking, this is what we kind of talked, touched on briefly. Uh, one half's guest parking space uh, per unit. So if you have fifty townhomes in the project, you have twenty five guest parking sta, spaces throughout that. And this is typically done because a lot of times tunnels are done in private roads where they have a smaller driveway, not as much parking if it's a, if it's the private drive we just talked about. So you can't park on the street. So you have limited parking availability. Now you'll have enough for the individual homeowner and their vehicles, but if they have a party and they want to invite, you know, ten families over, where are those people going to park? This guest parking is what that's for. So this will be spread out. It's not all one big lot. It's kind of spread out. You try to do it three, four spots here, three, four spots there and just spread it out throughout the development. Uh, the half, this requirement, by the way, almost every city I know of has this as a requirement, that half stall per unit. So. Um, and then design and location of off street parking. We're talking about that fifteen foot setback again, which we're kind of keeping that consistent through there. Then we got some landscaping screening requirements. Um, basically we're going to require some uh, buffer yard, boulevard shall be sodded, screen designated outdoor storage areas. Basically, we, you know, we want some specific requirements, you know, for these types of neighborhoods, you know, they're a little bit higher density. So if you got townhomes backing up to say a single family neighborhood, we want to give a little bit of screening in some of those areas. Screen public right of way and things like that. Uh, sodded areas, you know, in-ground irrigation with an automatic controller. Then the R four district is the last one. Uh, basically this is the, the high density district apartments, senior housing, stuff of that nature. So if you look at the permitted uses, we have multiple family dwelling structures. That is basically um, your, your apartment building or, or whatever. Uh, you got your parks, your residential facilities, we have them, senior housing, nursing homes, you know, those are, these are all definitions that we've already had in the, the definition section. Then townhouse is up to six units in a row or twelve units back to back. I was thinking it was eight, but I did. Maybe we want to bump that up to eight because it's a higher density because we are going from eight to twelve units on the back to back structure. Okay. You don't see a lot of eight units, but there are some out there here and there. So. Um, on the roll, I should say, in the roll housing, that's, that's where you got to walk out in the back and the entry in the front, the back to back. You sometimes, if you're an interior unit, you only access it in the front of the house, through the garage or the front door. Uh, permitted accessory stuff, this is all basically the same as what it is before. We do allow for private garages and off street parking and off street loading for multiple family dwellings. So if you have a, a big, you know, senior housing, you, you have to have, you know, or if it's a nursing home type of facility where they have to have, uh, they serve meals and stuff. Um, they'll bring a truck in for deliveries for food or whatever. So you want the off street parking, the off street loading, stuff of that nature. Sometimes you'll see them, they'll do a, a separate garage, like a garage where the people get a unit, you know, like ten ru, units in a row. So that's allowed as well. Uh, conditional uses, um, basically the same uh, as what we talked about before, the manufactured home park. We already said we're going to take that stuff out. Uh, interim uses, there's none again. And uses by administrative permit is the same as what the other ones were. And now we got the lot requirements and the common area stuff, very similar to what we did before. We do have minimum lot area. So if you have an apartment, for instance, that's going to go on one individual lot, which is typically the way it's done. There has to be a minimum of twenty thousand square feet and a hundred feet wide. The size will limit based on development density, which I'll get to in a second. Two family and townhome dwellings, we've already basically just copying the same language from the R three district. Uh, same with the base lot setbacks, the billing setbacks. Uh, two family and townhouses are the same. The multiple family uh, senior housing and nursing homes has twenty five foot setback. Um, so that's more of a bigger structure. So we want to make sure they are setback. So, you know, you know, you can be seven and a half feet or seven feet on a side yard for, say, detached tunnel, but we don't want a big apartment building being seven feet. So we are making them setback a little bit further. Uh, one thing I should bring up, the uh, detached townhouse, which is technically like a single family unit, we allowed it in the R two and the R three. We're not allowing that in R four because this is more of a high density district and that is kind of almost more of a low density type of use. So we are pulling that one out of there, but we are allowing the attaching. It's like twin homes and townhouses still. Uh, where was I here? Uh, twenty five, yeah, so billing setbacks, twenty five feet from the back curb line of private drives, twenty five from public. Uh, twenty-five, yeah, so billing setbacks, twenty-five feet from the back curb line of private drives, twenty-five from public right of way. Same with the parking areas, billing height. In this case, we're going to allow four stories or forty-eight feet. So there's something, you see a lot of these four-story apartment buildings nowadays. Um, I know Wacony has got a few of them that they've built over the last, you know, handful of years. Um, so we are upping that a little bit. Uh, accessory billing is still at twenty. The common areas, we're still dealing with the same common area language that hasn't adjusted from the previous districts. Development density, the townhouse dwellings are thirty-eight hundred, which is the same as the previous one. Multiple family dwellings, one thousand five hundred square feet per unit. Um, billings on lots, about in R one or R two districts shall not exceed a floor area ratio of seven tenths. So that's basically if you go under the floor area ratio definition, we're going to kind of limit how much they can have adjacent to the lower density districts. So we don't want some massive apartment building backing up to these single-family residences. We're going to allow, uh, limitations, um, and things of that nature, so. Uh, let's see here, um, senior housing and two-family, well, the two-family is the same. Senior housing and, uh, assisted or retirement care, one thousand per unit. Uh, that's a little bit even more dense, I guess. Uh, design and construction standards. So the R three design and construction standards, which we just kind of went through, we're going to use the same ones here. So we're kind of referencing that section from the previous district. And then it talks about the exterior of multiple family dwelling structures, senior housing, nursing homes. We want a variation of materials and coordinate into the architectural design of the structure to create an architecturally balanced appearance. In addition, multiple family dwelling structures shall comply with the following requirements. Fifty percent of the combined area of all elevations of the structure shall have exterior finish of brick, stucco, um, and/or natural or artificial stone. So we want to add some sort of, uh, number of fifty percent too much. I don't know. I mean, you can have hardy board siding and things like that, LP smart side as well. I guess that's for you guys to make that decision. Uh, the billing elevation shall not include areas devoted to windows, entrance doors, garage doors and roof areas. So basically that's your four residential districts and your agricultural district. The P U D district is the next section. Uh, I got a couple of areas highlighted in yellow, them are the only areas I want to touch on. And I think we're just about done here because we don't need to talk about the manufactured home stuff. Uh, we'll just skip that tonight. But, uh, page twenty-seven, we had some minimum sizes for P U D districts. I know a lot of cities lately have, have had, these were, typically there used to be minimum acreage. A lot of cities have gone away with that because you have instances, for instance, our Creamery situation over here. Um, you know, there's potential redevelopment of that and that may not meet the minimum size requirement, but maybe they want to do a P U D on some stuff. So do we want to limit that on specific circumstances like that? Or do we want to still keep that as a minimum? So we have those in there now, but.
What is the benefit of limiting it to?
Um, the, 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 if you go back years ago, there was always like P U Ds are only to be used on specific circumstances where the, the city is getting something in return for giving like more density or, or something of that nature. But we want to limit it to certain, you know, developments. Uh, for instance, city of Lakeville had a P U D limit of five hundred acres. And they've had a few that are bigger than that in their development history, recent development history. They're going away from that, getting rid of that. Cause it's like, why are we restricting something on a two-hundred-acre development? That could be something really cool, you know, that, that everybody wants, you know? So they've kind of gone away from that. They actually have got their own separate P U D district, which it's, P U D district is zone that. And alls you can do in that district is P U D stuff that's meant for. It's very limited on the properties involved, but it is something they do allow. So I don't know, it, it, to me, it's, it artificially limits potential developments on properties. Cause you could have some really neat things on some infill type properties that need a P U D that aren't allowed because it doesn't meet the district size. So. I work in Rust City and they just had this very thing come up and they actually went away from it. Cause they had a real, it's like an infill lot and they're going to do a real unique five-unit detached townhouse thing with the layout. And it was, it fit perfect for the neighborhood and everything, but it was under the size, only like one-point-two acre lot. And, um, they, they went away from it, same, same sort of thought process. Why are we limiting this on this property?
I'd be fine with getting rid of the limit because you're going to, I mean, the whole idea is you're going to be able to review it and demand whatever you want of it at the time.
Exactly.
Adds flexibility.
It does add flexibility, especially when you have, uh, potential uses where you have a mix of commercial and residential, um, which can happen, you know, in the, you know, like the downtown district allows for that. You can have some really unique things that could happen with that, so. So that was one item I wanted to just address. And, uh, the other one was on the next page, page twenty-eight. At the bottom, it talks about single-family P U Ds shall be subject to the following limitations. And what we have in here is, uh, minimum lot size and lot width shall only be reduced up to twenty-five percent. And then, uh, in addition to conventional park dedication requirements and the amount of eight percent of the total site area. Do we need to limit that if we're doing a P U D? Or do we want to address it, just let them do whatever they need to do? And if it makes sense, it makes sense because the city has the ability. This puts an artificial, artificial limit on single-family P U Ds to the actual number of lots they can, or the density and that sort of thing. I know the met council is against this sort of thing right now. They, they don't want to see cities have this. Cause it allows for developers to come up with unique developments that allow for additional density. Now, if I remember right, I can't remember whether it's Coldwater Crossing or Hidden Creek, one of those had an issue with this that it limited. And so I think they ended up losing like one or two lots because they couldn't meet the requirement if I recall correctly.
Seems like the theme on this has been go with flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's my thing too. I mean, it's been in the code and we, we did this, I don't know, six years ago or whatever, but that was kind of carryover language from the previous ordinance. So it just kind of stayed in there. And as I look at these two things now, it's kind of, is there really need for it? Like the P U D speaks for itself. The city likes it, they can approve it. They don't like it, you have the right to deny it, or at least they have an amendment to tell you do like it as a city, so. All right, um, and then the P U D, like I said, there's not much other. I mean, there's a few little items I address by wording things to be consistent. But other than that, that's it. And the manufactured home park, we don't need to talk about, so. And like I said, next month, the plan would be to go over all the commercial, industrial, public institutional districts. And that would be the entire code at that point. Well, I do have one other quick question, um, or comment. The current ordinance, uh, our city code, I should say, has, uh, some shoreline stuff, I believe, uh, which is the S L district. My assumption is we'd want to address that. It's the shoreline overlay, which is our current code. I don't think we need to update that, but I just want to make sure we're all on the same page at that shoreline stuff should be brought in. I think there's also floodplain, um, uh, district as well. Our floodplain regulations that are kind of separated from the zoning ordinance, that should also be put into the zoning ordinance. So I just want to get a feel, is everyone okay including that in the zoning ordinance? Or what, what are your thoughts on that? They are, so if you go to the page two of the report, I got the areas highlighted in yellow that we're going to talk about next week or next month they need. And I did add shoreline is in there, but I did add the floodplain overlay district in there. I got question marks. We have it in the code, but it's in a different section of the code that should be technically in the zoning ordinance. Cause it's a floodplain overlay, just like a shoreline overlay or something of that nature. So I just want to make, yeah, you can see the floodplain, it does address some pros, Coldwater Crossing specifically has some stuff in there that deals with floodplain, so. All right, so I'll, I'll make sure that's included in the next go-around as well. Just kind of convert the wording and go from there. So that's all I got, unless there's any questions. Getting close.
All right, next meeting Tuesday, November fourth. And any reports, commissioners report?
Nope.
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 Nothing to report.
Motion.
Motion for adjournment and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.